If everybody could take a seat. We're about ready to get started. Appreciate everybody coming down. We'll call the Metro Planning Commission to order for July 27th. And hopefully, it will cool down outside. And it might be cold in here. So, let's get to the first item on the agenda, which is the adoption of the agenda. And commissioners, have you reviewed the agenda? Is there a motion to adopt? There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and this agenda is adopted. Item C, which is the approval of the July 13th, 2017 minutes. Those were mailed out to you. You should have a copy of those. And I know that you've all reviewed those. Any questions, additions, edits? We'll need a motion to approve those minutes. It's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The minutes have been adopted. Now, we're on to one of our favorite parts of the agenda, which is the recognition of the council members. And I just wrote all of their names down as I saw them. And so, the first council member that I saw was Councilmember Nick Leonardo. Would you like to speak now, or when the item comes up? Welcome, councilmember.
Good afternoon. I have number 13, I believe, there, on the agenda. And I thought this had been on the consent agenda, but I believe it was pulled off. But, as a background, just so you have an idea, we had this new law called the Jackson's Law.
Councilman, hold on. We can't see. Is your microphone on? Let's make sure. It is? Okay, just talk a little closer. There we go. Perfect. All right.
So, this pertains to the Jackson's Law. And this was something the council passed about 90 days ago, which I'm very grateful to my fellow councilmembers. But, this was the only way that local people could have control over the placement of landfills. And there's a landfill in District 1 that was wanting to expand. And under the old process, it would, an expansion would go to the Solid Waste Regional Board, then on the T-Deck. And if it was a new landfill, then it would go before the BZA under a special exception, and then through the council to a resolution. And so, because of this expansion, we needed something that we could control, that the state would acknowledge. And this is, under this Jackson's Law, if we adopted it, then the state would have to show deference to it. So, we spent a lot of time in the Metro Council discussing it. And we adopted it with 33 votes. And as a result of the adoption, we decided that it would be best if we were to do a text amendment to kind of clean up the Metropolitan Code, so it wouldn't be so confusing, so they wouldn't be calling planning all the time, or calling codes, or the council office saying, "But, it's in the code. It's in the code." So, this is something that our council attorney, Mike Jamison, former judge, former councilmember, put together. And this is just kind of cleaning up the code to make it consistent with the passage of the Jackson's Law. Whether you pass this tonight, or you don't pass this tonight, it really doesn't make a difference in the law. I had seen an email from someone who had requested that it be pulled off the consent agenda. And those concerns that were being raised had passed three months ago. The time to question the overall acumen of the law was when we had a public hearing at the council, and we had several different work sessions about this. So, I would ask that you approve this, just to make it easier on the general public when they're trying to figure out about landfills and the like. And quite honestly, what I've seen, this is nothing more than lobbyists trying to make a collateral attack on something, but at the 12th hour, and it's really just too late. And so, whether, like I said, whether it passes, whether it doesn't pass, this is still the current state of the law. But, we would like to do this to make it easier in the code. So, I would ask for you to support this. I would ask for your approval. And I also thank you for your service. I know this is a really tough job you guys do, so I appreciate you guys being here and doing that. And if you have any questions about the Jackson's Law, or this text amendment, I'm more than willing to answer those questions.
Thank you, councilman. Appreciate you, Kim.
Thank you very much.
And for a lot of the people standing up, there's a lot of chairs up front. So, if you, if y'all could try to take a seat, that would be great. But, if you want to stand, I understand. Just, we try to. There are a lot of seats up front, too. All right. Council Lady Kathleen Murphy. You're on the item? Okay. Councilman Bill Pridemore. I saw Councilman Pridemore. Differ to your item. Councilman Scott Davis. Saw Mr. Davis. On the item? Okay. Council Lady Nancy Van Reese. Welcome, council lady.
Welcome to a wonderful evening. Thank you again for your service, all of you. I appreciate it. I particularly wanted to thank the planning staff for continued discussion about the amazing amount of development in the right way, in the right places, in District 8. And we're starting to see some of that take place. There are three things on the consent agenda tonight, and I just wanted to drop in and let you know about the community's support of them. The first is the Buffalo Trail Apartments on Dickerson Pike. We've had two community meetings. There's been several discussions, both by email and phone call with different constituents and concerns. Some of the most recent information that was sent over about this property, even today, talking with folks about understanding that in the rear of the development, that the work with the Church for Emergency Access has taken place. So, that's amazing. Understanding where the sidewalks need to go in order to really benefit the schoolchildren that are coming not only from this development, but others, so that we're moving that sidewalk further to the south, rather than to the north. All of that was because of community input. And so, I appreciate the work of the planning staff and with the folks on this project. It is an example of yes in my backyard for Madison, and I appreciate it being on consent. Item number 10 is the-
I think that was item 5.
5.
Yeah.
What did I say?
Yep.
5. Item number 10 is the Madison Community Plan Amendment. Very simply, across the street from No See College of Art, needed to be changed so that we could continue some development on Sharon. And ultimately, the support of No See College of Art was important to do that. So, they support this, and you'll see an SP coming behind it with some more development as it remains on consent. The third of those items is item number 14, also on consent, Bethwood Commons Specific Plan. Bethwood Commons is the first official thing that you've seen in the trail-oriented development area, and is going to be connecting as well to Oakwood Park. And so, we've had a couple of really fantastic community discussions with the Bethwood neighborhood. And we appreciate that, being on consent as well. So, just wanted to drop in and let you know that all of these items, from east to Maplewood and into Madison, are things that we've worked very hard on, and I appreciate your continued support. Thanks.
Thank you, council lady. Councilman Brett Withers?
I'm here for item 21 for Councilmember Russ Pulley, and I will defer to the item.
Okay. And I saw Councilman Larry Hager walk in. Hello, councilman. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. All I've got is number 11 on the consent agenda. That is changing the community plan from a neighborhood maintenance to neighborhood evolving. We've had two community meetings on this, probably over 100 people, and we had overwhelming support for that. So, we would like to see that go on through and get passed by the Planning Commission, and we'll come back and have probably some type of SP for the developer that wants to go in there. But, I appreciate y'all passing that. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Come down. Any other councilmembers? I'll make sure we don't miss anybody. All right. Seeing none, we'll go to item E, which is items for deferral withdrawal. Lucy.
Items for deferral or withdrawal for this night's agenda include item 1A, 2017 CP-010, the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan Amendment. A request to amend the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan from T3 suburban residential corridor to transition policy at 2041 Overhill Drive. And a related case, item 1B, 2017-045, the Alexander SP. A request to rezone from RM20 to SP zoning at 2041 Overhill Drive. Both of these are deferred to the August 10th, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item 2, 2017 SP-005, the Livery at Fifth and Monroe. Rezoning from MUN to SP at 1235 Fifth Avenue North in the Germantown Historic Preservation Overlay. Staff is recommending to defer to August 10th. Item 4A, 2017 SP-043, the Highway 70 SP. Request to rezone from RM20 to SP zoning on various properties at Highway 70 to permit 80 multifamily units. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the September 14th, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item 4B, an associated case, 2017 SP-044, Sawyer Brown SP. Rezone from ON to SP zoning at various addresses on Highway 70 South to permit general office medical and personal instruction uses. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the September 14th Planning Commission meeting. Item 4C, 94P-025, the PUD cancellation. This would cancel the Bellevue Commercial Plan Unit Development Overlay for various properties on Highway 70. Item number 12, on page 8, 2017 Z-013TX. This is a request for an amendment to Section 1728 of the Metro Code pertaining to rope lighting, at the request of Councilmember Tanaka Virture. Staff's recommendation is to withdraw. Item number 17, on page 9, 2017 S-147, Amanda K. Berry Land. This is to amend a previously approved plat, removing the 30-foot setback on West Kirkwood Avenue at 838 Kirkwood Avenue. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the August 10th Planning Commission meeting. Item number 24, 2017 Z-083. This is a request to rezone from SP to R6 zoning at 1005 Joseph Avenue, south of Evanston And on this item, Commissioner Blackshear is recused. This item is being deferred to the August 24th Planning Commission meeting. Item number 25, 2017 Z-085. A request to rezone from AR2A to CL zoning at 6804 Newlandsville Pike. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the August 24th meeting. Item number 26, 4-86P-001 at 2156 Murphysboro Pike. This is a request to revise a preliminary plan and for final site approval for a PUD overlay at 2162 Murphysboro Pike to permit a storage building and to permit the expansion of an existing self-storage facility. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the August 10th, 2017 Planning Commission meeting, and Commissioner Blackshear is recused from this item as well.
Thank you. So, commissioners, let's go, make sure I don't mess up, Lucy. Items for deferral withdrawal are 1A, 1B, 2, 4A, 4B, 4C, 12, 17, 24, which is not on your agenda, but add that, 25, and 26. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral withdrawal. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Those items are deferred to withdrawal. We're on item F, the consent.
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner, and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Items on consent. Notice for the public. Items on consent will be voted for, will be voted on, at one single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the items be removed from the consent agenda. So, those items are as follows. Item number 5, 2017 SP-056, Buffalo Trail Apartments SP. This is on page 6. A request to rezone from CS to RM2. CS and RM2 to SP zoning on a portion of property located at 3711 Dickerson Pike to permit 260 multifamily residential units. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page 7, item 7, 2017 S-120, south side of 39th Avenue and east side of Clifton Street. A request for final plat approval to create three lots at 621 39th Avenue North. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item 8, 2017 Z-041PR. A request to rezone from RS40 to AR2A on properties at 1890 Hudson Road. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Number 9, 2017 Z-079PR. A request to rezone from R8 to RS7.5 for various properties along Cantrell Avenue, Carden Avenue, and Leonard Avenue. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove if submitted and approve with a substitute ordinance. Item 10, 2017 CP-004, the Madison Community Plan Amendment at Sharon Road at Briarsville Road. Request to amend the Madison Community Plan by changing from District Major Institutional to T3 Suburban Neighborhood Center on properties at Briarville Road and Sharon. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Item 11, 2017 CP-014, the Donaldson Hermitage Old Hickory Community Plan Amendment. To amend this community plan by changing from T3 Suburban Neighborhood Maintenance to T3 Suburban Neighborhood Evolving on various properties located on Park Circle and Hamblin Avenue. Item 14, on page 8, 2016 SP-040, Bethwood Commons SP. This rezoning from RS10 and RS7.5 to SP for property at 2634 Bethwood Drive and Allenwood Drive to permit 77 residential units. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all. Item 15, 2017 NHC-003 Bowling House. To apply neighborhood conservation overlay on various properties along Colorado. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Item 16, Whitland Area Neighborhood Conservation Overlay, 2017 NHC-004. To apply neighborhood conservation overlay for various properties along Leonard Avenue and Carden. Staff's recommendation is to approve. On page 9, number 19, 2017 S-058, Natchez Hill Subdivision. Final plat approval to create three lots at 8727 McCrory Lane. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions, including a variance to the standard depth of the screened area. Item 20, on page 9, 2017 S-164, Deer Meadows Phase 1. A request for final plat approval to remove the reserve parcel status on property at 500 Green Lane. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page 10, item 22, 2017 Z-080PR. A request to rezone from RS10 to OR20 on property located at 2000 South Hamilton Road. Staff's recommendation is to approve. On item 23, 2017 Z-081. This is a rezone from CL to MULA zoning at 2006 South Hamilton. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Items 27, renewal contract for Robert Lehman. Staff's recommendation is to approve. 28 is an employment contract for Nick Lindeman. Staff's recommendation is to approve. 29, recertification of bonus height compliance for Capital View Block E. Staff's recommendation is to approve. And I note that Commissioner Haynes has recused himself from this item. Item number 33, to accept the director's report and approve administratum items. Staff's recommendation is to approve.
Thank you. All right. So, commissioners and Lucy, make sure I don't get anything wrong here. So, items for the consent are item 5, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 14, 15, 16, 19, 20, 22, 23, 27, 28, 29, and 33.
Yes.
That's correct? All right, commissioners, you've heard the items for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The consent agenda is adopted. And so, what that means to the audience is there are, the items that we will consider tonight, and make sure I'm correct here, too, are items number 3, 6, 13, 18, and 21.
3, 6.
Five items. Is that correct?
13, 18, and 21. Yes.
Okay. So, for the viewing audience, if you're not here for items 3, 6, 13, 18, or 21, we've disposed of all the other items. So, if everybody could quickly and quietly exit the room, we really appreciate it, and thank you for coming down. And so, we're ready for item number 3. All right. Let it rip.
Okay. Item number 3 on your agenda is the East Trinity Lane SP. This is a request to rezone to permit 190 multifamily residential units. And staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The property is currently zoned RS5 residential, single-family, 5,000-square-foot minimum lot size. The property is located south of East Trinity Lane and east of Edwin Street, west of Elmington Parkway. The site is approximately 10.08 acres in size and is currently vacant. I did want to point out that on the adjacent property, Parcel 57, there is a metro facility that is utilized by Metro Water Services. Additionally, there is a 1.24-acre portion of the property located here that is not included as a part of the SP. It will maintain its CL zoning, so it's not part of this request. The plan proposes a total of 190 multifamily dwelling units. Now, that's going to be split up in between 120 stacked flat units, 25 townhomes, and 45 cottage units. The plan transitions from the higher intensity along the corridor with the stacked flats to lower intensity on the southern portion of the site. The stacked flats are located within two buildings along the northern portion of the site. One of the buildings wraps the corner, addressing both East Trinity Lane and Edwin Street. The second multifamily unit is located interior to the site, near an amenity area with a pool. The townhomes are located mid-site, and then we step down to the cottage units south of the townhomes. There are two vehicular access points proposed for the project. There's one vehicular access point located here on East Trinity, and there's additionally an access point located here on Edwin Street. The Edwin Street entrance is primarily to serve the units to the south, where you see this looped road design. Now, this looped road design is proposed with an alternative design standard, which is a 20-foot-wide road, and includes a shared area for pedestrians, which will have a different paving type, to set that aside. It is a low-traffic street, and so, it's more of a shared pedestrian and vehicular traffic street. There are sidewalks and pedestrian connections throughout the site. There are a series of trails located throughout the area as well. And so, you can see on this map indicating the pedestrian network throughout the site. Sidewalks consistent with the major and collector street plan are proposed along East Trinity Lane, and sidewalks consistent with the local street standard are proposed along Edwin Street. There will be sidewalks and trails, like I said, throughout, connecting all of the units to the various amenities located on the plan. The plan emphasizes, through the use of that looped road network, protection of trees and protection of the existing slopes on the property. So, they're working with those environmental features, the trees and the slopes, to provide for a coordinated plan and approach to protect those. Architectural standards have been proposed by the developer. They include standards such as specific glazing, stoops, porches, those sorts of items, especially along the frontages on East Trinity and Edwin Street. You can see some character imagery along the lower portion of the slide there, and that's kind of some proposals of what the different types of units are proposed to look like. All of the architectural elevations would be reviewed with the final site plan, and at those times, staff would ensure that those are consistent with all of those architectural standards. Staff has also proposed some additional architectural standards to make sure that the intent of the SP is being met. You can see those in the staff report. In regards to the land use policy, this site is situated within two separate land use policies. Along East Trinity Lane is a T4 urban residential corridor policy. Now, the urban residential corridor policy, those are policies that are located along prominent corridors, and they encourage additional housing to enhance the existing and future transit along those streets. The remainder and the majority of the property is located within an urban neighborhood evolving policy. That policy is intended to provide additional housing choice, improve pedestrian and vehicular connectivity, and moderate to high-density development patterns. I wanted to take us out a bit to look at a little bit of a larger policy area, to see how this fits in with the area, if you look at a bigger picture. The site is here, located, outlined in blue. So, as you can see, the site is located within an area that has quite a few policy areas. There is a variety of policies, including District Employment Center to the north, which is this large area here. Residential corridor along Trinity, as well as mixed-use corridor along Trinity here. You also have a large area of mixed-use corridor along Dickerson Pike, here. And this property is located between a residential corridor policy and a mixed-use neighborhood policy here along Cherokee. It is within a larger area of neighborhood evolving. There is some area of neighborhood maintenance located interior here, and north of Trinity, there are large areas of neighborhood maintenance. But, this is located within an area of neighborhood evolving, and also surrounded by more intense Looking at the Nashville Next Growth and Preservation Concept Map. As you all know, Nashville Next was adopted by you all, and that is the long-range plan for Nashville. It indicates the areas where it's appropriate for growth to take place. I wanted to pull this specific so that you could see the relationship of this area to downtown, which is, of course, our most intense area, and is a Tier 1 center. This site is located next to a Tier 2 center, which is the area that's kind of in this golden color here. So, the red dot is where the location is. So, just for a little bit of perspective, the site is located about four miles from downtown. So, we are talking about relatively close into downtown, it's the most intense areas. There's a Tier 2 center, like I said, immediately adjacent, and also a larger Tier 2 center area here between I-65 and Dickerson Pike. Now, Gallatin Avenue and Dickerson Pike are both identified as immediate-need, high-impact transit corridors. And those are areas where we would, of course, anticipate additional growth to take place. Now, East Trinity Lane is a long-term, high-impact transit corridor. So, the thought would be that at some point, that would connect those two other high-impact transit corridors. I think, as you all will note as well, Gallatin Avenue, which this site is less than a mile I think, as you all will note as well, Gallatin Avenue, which this site is less than a mile from, has been identified as the first priority light rail corridor by Mayor Berry. The site is also less than a mile from Dickerson Pike. So it is between both of those high-impact transit corridors and located immediately adjacent to a Tier 2 center. The plan does meet two critical planning goals, and that it provides a range of housing choices within an area that is identified to accept additional housing, a neighborhood-evolving area. It also preserves sensitive environmental features through the design of the site, utilizing the looped road to ensure that we're preserving trees and maintaining the existing slopes on the property. In conclusion, given the location within the larger growth and preservation map, given the policy for the area, and meeting those critical planning goals, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you, Lisa. And just so the commissioners know, Lisa's covering for Abby. Okay. Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. The applicant, is the applicant here? Hello, sir. You'll have 10 minutes. You can save two of the 10 for rebuttal. Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Andy Beard, and I represent the owner. I work with Core Development. And I'm going to be quick. I'm just going to talk a little bit about our team and a little bit about the process. We, well, actually, I'll start a little bit more with the process. We've been working with the planning department in a pretty intense way for the last almost six months. So a lot of pre-application consultation has gone into the site. Inherent to the site are great opportunities in terms of its location geographically, in terms of its proximity to two major corridors. It also has great opportunities in terms of view potential, just from a strict marketing perspective. It's also a challenging site. Topography and a lot of rock. And a lot of that fed into what were a lot of discussions and a lot of review with the planning department. We feel as though the result of a lot of hard work with the planning department, with Public Works, just at that preconsultation stage, has really rendered what we think is an appropriate solution for the site, and we're excited about that. Our team includes EOA Architecture, Hawkins Partners for Landscape Architecture, Barge Coffin Civil Engineering, and also RPM on the traffic engineering side. Given the nature of the discussion, we really did not have clear understanding and direction in terms of what our final application concept would entail. Really, we didn't get final comments back until, really, last Friday. And so we wanted to stay on this agenda and present to the commission, given kind of the protracted nature of our discussions, so that we could then move on and get to some of the more detailed discussions with the neighborhood. Just to be frank with you, I wish that we would have had a chance to have had an open house or a neighborhood-wide presentation, but we have not. What we have done is we've met with Highland Heights Neighborhood Association's Development and Planning Committee, and we went over our project in relation to their developer packet, which basically itemizes all of the interests that they have and the things that they want to see in future development. And we went through, and we felt like that was a positive meeting, such that they felt as though they were comfortable with us coming before the commission before having made the larger presentation to the neighborhood. I've also met with one of the representatives from the neighborhood who lives on Edwin, who will be speaking in objection today. We've started conversations, and I've committed to having kind of a living-room meeting with those neighbors on Edwin that have not had a chance to talk with us at this point. We are now on schedule for August 17 to make a larger presentation to the Highland Heights Neighborhood Association, and we're also working to have an open house in addition to that prior to going to council for public hearings. So we feel as though there's plenty of time for us to have discussions with those people that have not had the opportunity to engage with us. Don't think there's anything more about the process. Again, we're excited. We think this is a strategic location. We feel like this property has been vacant for this long for a reason, but we kind of feel like we've unlocked the potential based on the expertise of our consulting team, and we look forward to working with the neighborhood and with the planning department from this point forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And you'll have two minutes for your rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up, and if you'll just state your name and your address, and you'll have two minutes, unless you represent a neighborhood association.
I'm not representing the neighborhood association.
All right, welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon, commissioners, members of the planning department. My name is Ashanti Davis. I live at 321 Edwin Street, Nashville, Tennessee. I'm the person that Mr. Beard mentioned. I want to clarify, it wasn't necessarily like a meeting. We had a 30-minute conversation where we just kind of had an introduction. He explained his perspective. I explained mine, but there hasn't been any substantive conversations about this particular development. And to be completely honest, other than what's in the planning commission report and the presentation today, I don't know if a lot of members of the neighborhood actually know a lot about this development. So I wanted to frame this to you all. It was on the consent agenda normally, and then I asked that it be removed. And then there's some other people from my neighborhood are here, and honestly, I feel like this is like the classic David versus Goliath, like grudge match. And I normally don't like being David, because sometimes you don't want to be the small person because you don't have all the resources. Mr. Beard is a very nice person. They have, at this point, put a lot of work into this. He has an urban planning background. But just from people that live in this neighborhood, we feel like this falls short for several reasons. And one of the reasons is that thankfully, Elvira Street has provided us some precedent. Elvira was a street that was in a neighborhood where every street around it was neighborhood maintenance, except for it, it was neighborhood evolving. That's similar here. Edwin and Edith are the only streets out of most of this neighborhood that are neighborhood-evolving. Everything around it, I can walk a block up, and I'm in a neighborhood maintenance. If I walk back to my street, I'm somehow in a neighborhood evolving, even though the homes in the street have a similar composition. So I think the first thing is that there is precedent for not putting this type of development of 190 units stacked flats in a street. The second thing that I wanted to tell you is that I think calling this the East Trinity Lane SP is sort of misleading. I sent some pictures to you in your packet of the neighborhood. They're photos of houses that are, I'm sorry, I'm out of time. But if you look at those photos, there's a lot of letters. I got 50 letters from the neighborhood saying that they were against this. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Yeah, let's make sure that you give the staff the letters for the record. Oh, and we have them? Okay. Yeah, just make sure we get all those. And the pictures. Do you all have the pictures too? Oh, email, okay, perfect. All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the applicant will have two minutes for rebuttal. Sir, would you like a rebuttal, or?
I guess my response to the objection is that we're committing to spending more time with neighbors on Edwin and with the larger neighborhood. We have worked very closely and feel very confident that what we are proposing are well within the boundaries of the policy, and I feel like we're very open to discussing how, within that policy, we can make this development integrate into the neighborhood. We realize that there are impacts that are going to come along with this project, and that's why our consultants are on our team to help us address those impacts. So we do appreciate the concerns of the neighborhood. We're committed to continuing to work with them, and that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. And the councilman is here to speak on this item. Councilman, welcome.
Thank you, staff members. Thank you, commissioners, for volunteering your time. It's been a long process. Some of my, the development group came in front of the steering committee, the Development Steering Committee for Highland Heights, and presented this project. And part of them not getting there before was a big concern that we raised. We've been talking about this project for a while, and if we can go back, Lisa, if we can go back to the map where it shows the Trinity Lane and Ellington Parkway, because I think that's where we could see the parcel the best that I'm going to be referencing Here we go, right here. The biggest aspect, you know, even though no one's being displaced, this is vacant land. But one of the biggest things as far as, you know, after some traffic concerns, was the affordability. You know, people are getting displaced. People are needed. And this is why we're doing an open house on August 24th or the 14th, which my neighbors, my Highland Heights neighbors gave their full blessing for. I'm just so happy because they're giving 1.4 acres to Affordable Housing, Inc., to do an affordable housing project. Eddie Latimer's group. I spoke to their board chair initially when we were talking about this. You know, we're like, okay, what are we going to do with some excess land? Are you going to do 198 units in my neighborhood, even though I'm glad you're not displacing anybody as far as infrastructure requirements and doing the green space and doing the trees? Highland Heights is going to ask you, what about affordability? We have neighbors being displaced every day. And we looked at those, I think it's 1.5, 1.6 acres, I'm not sure, but it's the corner piece that's been left out. They are deeding that piece to Affordable Housing Incorporated. And more important, like, great, Eddie Latimer, his group is great, and we're going to deed that piece, you know? But we've been talking with NOAA and using an outline, which is partly my creation, partly Jim Hawke, partly a few others, to get those people who have been displaced into those units. Because with Affordable Housing, Inc., we can, A, have those units, and I believe that the original development call on those 1.5 acres, 25 to 30 units, I'm not quite sure, but those units will be going directly to folks that have been moved out of the East Nashville area. And how we're doing that is when Affordable Housing, Inc. gets the property, which they're a respected 501(c), that does affordable housing in the area, we directly bring those folks, like we're doing with the apartments off of Trinity, letting them sign pre-leases or giving them plots of land to say, this is your house. This is your future. We just need to build it. And mean old Councilman Davis is making the developer give the property away. Yes, I'm sorry, they didn't really like the idea, you know, of giving 1.5 acres of prime real estate, you know, away for affordable housing, and that neighbors are going to be able to control what they do and say. You know, I understand the David and Goliath reference, because sometimes I feel like that, especially when I'm bringing a bill in opposition to the staff, and you find, ladies and gentlemen, say, no. And that's fine. Everybody has their own opinion. But looking at green space, accessibility to Ellington Parkway, Dickerson Road, and Gallatin, and now that strong affordable housing, I'm sorry, and workforce housing aspect, which we're going to be able to give those units to people that have been displaced, instead of, you know, putting them on the market and having a free-for-all, you know? And that's different. And yes, it's tough to give away that much property, you know, when they could put more units, because they're obviously, you know, doing what the staff has recommended them to do, working with the topography, working with the landscaping, you know, doing the tree buffers, adding the sidewalks, you know, and the infrastructure, you know? But to have that kind of presentation and for a developer to give that much prime real estate away to Affordable Housing, Inc., Eddie Latimer's group, and to want to do that, I think we should applaud them. And it's not over yet. We're going to have neighborhood meetings, and a lot of the people that were in and may have sent letters in opposition didn't understand that. So they're going to give that much property away, and once they realize it's vacant, so by the time we get to council, I'm hoping, and I'm hoping Ms. Davis and others will be on the opposite side saying, yes, you know, no displacement, access to the highway, and real affordable housing. And that's another way we need to look at it, like, hey, you don't want to build affordable housing? Give me three acres. And, you know, give me three acres of your 12 acres, and we'll let NOAA, the Affordable Housing Incorporated, the Barnes Fund, build it for you. We have the land. Land's the hardest part to get most of the time, because it costs a lot, because, like you said, we're four miles from downtown. And I'm very excited about that, and I know my Highland Heights neighbors are looking forward to that discussion. Affordable Housing Incorporated will be at that meeting, and my goal is to make that marriage work before we go in front of Highland Heights, so they feel secure, affordable housing, like, yes. You know, pending, you know, council approval, this is our land now. And what do you want, what kind of affordable housing or workforce housing do you want here for your neighbors? And sorry to ramble, but this is very exciting for me, because I've never seen a developer, at least not in my neighborhood, when I've asked them, hey, why don't you give the land to an affordable housing entity? They've said no, or looked at me like I was crazy, or said they were going to do it and didn't follow through with it. But they've willing to follow through. They know Eddie. They trust him. A lot of us know Eddie, have worked with him on projects here, and that's happening. And I'm just so excited and happy about it, and just thank you for your time, and hopefully we can bring you some updates pretty soon. And just thank you for your time, folks.
Thank you, councilman. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll close the public hearing. And how about we start with Commissioner Haynes?
So I applaud the project and applaud the dedication of the 1.2 acres, I guess, council for you. How do we ensure that that transfer takes place as this moves through council? I guess we can't.
That property is not part of this SP. That's this part here. So the overall property boundaries are this part that's shaded in gray and this little corner here. And so that's not part of the SP. It's actually remaining as CL. So the SP doesn't cover that portion of the property.
With respect to whether or not Metro can enforce that, that would be an agreement between the private parties, so we would not necessarily be able to, that's between the private parties. That's not a Metro issue.
So that is a risk that we take as we move this through council?
Well, except to the extent that, as Lisa pointed out, that's not a part of this SP zoning.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Sims.
No comment.
Counsel lady.
Well, I congratulate the council member on, once again, being remarkably creative here and trying to find land where people will do affordable housing is something we've worked really hard for. I realize it's not necessarily part of this SP. I'm still a little confused on where it sits. I thought, where's the Metro Water Services land? Right, where the tanks are. And so where's?
So this property, so we have outlined in red only the portion of the property that's covered by the SP. But you can see there's a little gap right here, and so this property actually wraps, the overall property outline actually wraps the Metro Water Facility. And so it's this portion of the property here, which is currently zoned CL, commercial limited. And so that part is not included as part of the SP.
Can you answer the question of would a rezoning be needed to put affordable housing on commercial limited property?
It would likely fall under the adaptive residential portion of the zoning code. And what the adaptive residential portion of the zoning code does is it says that within certain commercial districts, if they are located along a street that is identified as a arterial or collector by the major and collector's street plan and located within the urban services district, then they can by right develop residential, so long as at least 40% of the project is residential. So it would actually allow for, if possible, a mixture of uses, and then there's not necessarily an FAR control over the residential portion.
Gotcha. So it's absolutely possible with that zoning?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's encouraging. I appreciate concerns of neighbors. We always need to be aware of those. It sounds like there is a community process planned to deal with that, and certainly the council process will deal with that. So I think at this point, from a planning standpoint, I'm comfortable with it.
I actually want to thank both the developer and the neighbor for coming up and then giving their explanations of, obviously, why they support and why they oppose the project. It sounds like, according to the developer or the applicant, there has been a meeting with the steering committee of a neighborhood association, but you acknowledge that there has not been a neighborhood-wide meeting. has not been a neighborhood-wide meeting, and I appreciate the fact that you are endeavoring to hold that very soon. I guess, I'm always a little troubled when something comes before us without having had substantial neighborhood, I guess, comments added to it. And I feel like, I think you're genuine that you are going to meet with the neighborhood and you are going to take those considerations into account when you're looking at this preliminary SP, which leads me to believe that perhaps the preliminary SP could be revised or changed in some way. So I don't think that, I feel like this may be premature for me to support. I'm not really comfortable voting for something that has not had any meaningful neighborhood stakeholder input, so I probably would not be in support of this project at this time.
Commissioner Galloway.
I certainly respect Commissioner Blackshear's and what we're, and all that she said, but I think this is a good solution. It looks like it's going in the right direction, it's very professional, and so I'm inclined to support it.
Commissioner Haynes.
I'm with, actually Commissioner Blackshear on this one. My question is, this was deferred on July 13th, there was no public hearing, so there's been, you know, two weeks since then, and we've got an open house scheduled, and I was hearing from the developer that, I think you said, that you have not had an opportunity to have an open house with the community or present to the community, and you wanted to. The question is, why have you not had that opportunity? Seems like there's been plenty of time.
Commissioner, can you explain the community?
The association sent a letter and packet. The association sent a letter and packet at the steering committee meeting. They had another development presenting that week, and they didn't want neighbors to get confused. And because of the improvements and the commitment to affordability, we thought about, hey, let's defer this here and let's put it on the planning docket. But he has the letter, I thought he sent it in for planning permission. The steering committee gave them the blessing to come to planning first and then come before them. So the neighborhood association leaders said, we're fine with this going to planning first because we have the open house scheduled and that they wanted to. And that's why it was deferred, because they wanted to meet with the neighbors first. And then we made some changes. And also, I'm not trying to throw planning under the bus here, but, and I'll just blame Doug, okay, because I'm not going to blame any one of the folks, you know? But it was suggested that we take that parcel out, you know, of this SP, and that we put into council bill, that deed, you know what I mean, giving that to Affordable Housing, Inc. Incorporated. You know, that was a suggestion, you know, and from, and I'll blame Doug.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And so, the letters, it should be, and they sent it.
Let's see if it's...
From the chair.
There's no letter in the packet that we have. There's 20, 30 letters opposing it, but there are no letters supporting it in our packet. That's why, that's my concern. When you have 30 letters opposing a proposal and no one's speaking on behalf of it other than the councilman and the developer, and there haven't been community meetings, and I've sat on a neighborhood association meeting, neighborhood association board, and the steering committee doesn't always speak for the, all of the neighbors. So that's my concern, and I'm just going to, I applaud the development, I applaud, yes, it's prime real estate, we all know that, I moved from Russell Street to White's Creek. The house has been sold twice since I left. It happens. But at this point, I don't see why we couldn't defer. A deferral from two weeks to another time might help in terms of the community having the chance.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, we're now ready for a motion, so it's up to the commissioners to make a motion. You can make a motion for a deferral, or...
I guess, I guess that's the question, is would a deferral give you an opportunity to have a, is it going to put you behind anything monetarily, financially? Are we already on a calendar? This is a question that's usually asked, are we already on something for the council that would be pushed?
There is not currently a council bill, so it could be deferred.
I mean...
Well, let's ask the developer, it's a good question for the developer. Would you be willing to defer for one meeting or two meetings?
I would speak to some of the questions that the commissioner asked.
Now, you had the opportunity to speak, but would, the question that is before you would be a deferral.
I would just want to clarify when the open house was going to be. Based on my notes, I think it might be after the next commission meeting, so if the goal is to meet, to have that meeting first and then have an opportunity for any refinements and then bring it back, I would just want to make sure we sequence that to give it sufficient time.
Yes, thanks.
We have another question before a motion will be made.
I think it is important that, because of all the number of letters we got in this, that we bend over backwards to make sure the community is heard in this. I love this plan, I went by and looked at the property, it's beautiful, I think you've done an awesome job of coming up with what can be done. I applaud the fact that you're giving this property to the not-for-profit so they can develop affordability, but there's been no formal mechanism yet to listen to the community, and that's got to happen, so I can move for a deferral or whatever.
Ma'am, we've finished the public hearing, but you can probably talk to the councilmen, he's right over here, if, or the...
I need to tell him you do have a date scheduled for that public meeting.
Oh, you have a, is the, what is the date?
It's August the 7th.
Okay, we have that, yes ma'am, we have that, thank you very much. So we'll need a motion?
I would make a motion for a two-meeting deferral.
Okay, there's proper motion for a two-meeting deferral?
Second.
In a second? Any more discussion? All in favor of a two-meeting deferral, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it, it's been deferred two meetings. But let's make a clarification that that is for it to come up on the agenda, not for another public hearing, correct?
Do you want to hear it from the chairman?
Public hearing has been closed.
Can we, can we clarify, a public hearing is closed, but letters will still be read?
Yeah, absolutely, I think anything for, but the public hearing's already been closed. All right, we're on item six.
All right, the next item on this evening's agenda is item six. This is a request for a specific plan zoning to permit up to 158 multifamily residential units on approximately 8.4 acres. The property site is located between Meridian Street and Lishy Avenue, just north of Edith Avenue and south of Edwin in East Nashville. As a point of reference, this is Tom Joy Elementary School that you're seeing across from the site here. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The current zoning on the property is RS5, which is intended for single-family dwellings with a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. The policy in this area is T4 Urban Neighborhood Evolving, which is intended to create and enhance urban residential neighborhoods with more housing choices and high connectivity, with moderate to high density and shallower setbacks in areas served by transit. This plan includes 158 units in both townhomes and stacked flats on a larger infill site close to existing MTA bus route, which runs along Lishy and Edwin. It also includes improved pedestrian connectivity in the area to the school and the park. This is the site plan for the specific plan proposal. There are 44 townhome units, those are the smaller squares interior to the site here. They're located along the interior access drive and oriented either to that drive or towards open space areas. The remaining 110 units are in stacked flat-style buildings, two of which will frame Meridian Street, one framing Lishy, and then two on the interior access drive around this small traffic circle area. There are open spaces throughout this development totaling 16,000 square feet of active open space. This is a diagram of the vehicular and pedestrian connectivity within this plan. All vehicular access would be via a private drive, which connects from Lishy to Meridian through the site, and then there will be a public alley, there is existing alley right-of-way at the northern boundary of the site, but that alley is unbuilt, so the alley would be constructed to a public alley standard and be a public alley. Lishy is on the Major and Collector Street Plan, and sidewalks and a planting strip consistent with those standards are provided along the property frontage on Lishy. There would be sidewalks consistent with the local street standards along the property frontage on Meridian, and then there would be sidewalks consistent with the local street standard along the private drive. Those sidewalks would be in a public pedestrian easement, so although the road is private, the sidewalks would be public, providing pedestrian connectivity through the site for the neighborhood. And then there are also sidewalk connections from all of the units to those public sidewalks. There are 307 parking spaces located throughout the site, either in garages, surface lots, or on street along that private drive. Additionally, staff has recommended some conditions that ensure that the sidewalks that exist along Lishy and Meridian are upgraded so that they connect in a complete way to the transit stops, which are just north and south of the site along Meridian and Lishy. This is a conceptual rendering provided by the applicant of the interior of the development, giving you a sense for how the units would relate around that traffic circle that you saw on the plan. So these are the stacked flat buildings that you're seeing here, these would be more of the townhome-style units. These are some images provided of the intended architectural character. The height within the development would be limited to three stories and 50 feet, although both two-and-a-half-story and three-story townhome units are proposed. The plan also includes standards for building articulations to avoid unbroken blank walls, for porch steps, for window orientation, and also prohibited materials. As the policy in this area supports infill to produce a different character with increased housing diversity, and this plan would provide that in a location that is close to transit and with improved pedestrian connectivity, which is consistent with the goals of the policy, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing, and the applicant, come on up, you have 10 minutes to present, and you can reserve two minutes of the 10 for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Planning commissioners, my name is Greg Tidwell, I'm with Smith G. Studio Architects. We are the applicant representing the developer for the property. Just wanted to talk to you again a little bit about the process here. On June 8th, we did meet with the Highland Heights Development and Zoning Steering Committee, and Andrea Fowler, we had been talking with her, leading up to that meeting, back and forth about what we were proposing for this rezoning, as well as Councilman Davis. On June 15th, a week after that meeting, we did go before the Highland Heights Neighborhood Association and presented the plan to them, and had a really good, I think, productive meeting with that neighborhood association. Several questions were asked, as the applicant, we were able to answer some of those. The developer was also able to answer some of those questions that came up during that meeting. Since then, we obviously made the application. We believe that, fully that this plan meets the policy area for T4 Urban Neighborhood Evolving. We believe that this is a great opportunity for a very unique redevelopment of what is currently a mobile home park. We understand that there are approximately somewhere around 10 remaining residents here, most of the mobile homes have been evacuated already, so most of this property is vacant. We do believe that because we do have Lishy being on the Major Collector Street Plan, also across from Tom Joy, there's a great opportunity here to connect this neighborhood from Meridian through pedestrian wise to access that open space that is around Tom Joy. We also believe that building the alley in the current right-of-way, that's already the public right-of-way that is there, that is unimproved, would help serve this development and could also add value and serve those neighbors to the north that are fronting Edwin Street. We do believe that we've created a very pedestrian-friendly interior to this plan with sidewalks, street trees, planting strips. We are proposing, as was mentioned by staff, active open spaces, some of those to be programmed with perhaps a dog park. We appreciate our four-legged friends in these neighborhoods. We've also really strived in this plan to keep the surface parking areas to the rear of the building, so that as you were walking or driving slowly through the street, through this neighborhood, the streetscape is presented with stoops, porches, active uses, and not dominated by automobiles and parking lots. We feel that's very important. We're also using some of the setbacks contextual, both on Lishy and on Meridian Street, to treat and capture stormwater. Right now, there's not a whole lot of stormwater control on this property, and we spoke with a neighbor moments before this meeting tonight, who was very concerned about that. And I do want to say that Reagan Smith is the engineer on this application, and they will be moving forward with us into the final SP, and that stormwater will be improved on this site, because we are planning to capture and treat for quality stormwater that would be slowly discharged from this site. We are also planning, as you see in the illustrative plan before you, to maintain as many of the large canopy trees along the perimeters of this site as possible, especially where we have common lot lines with neighbors that we're backing up to along the south, those neighbors that live along Edith Avenue. There is a parcel on Edith Avenue that could have been developed and could have been used for access, but the developer client believes that that would be better utilized at this time for some sort of amenity space for the residents on Edith Avenue. So that green space you see on Edith will be that, it could be used for some stormwater treatment, to clean some stormwater before it's slowly released, but we would also see that as an interactive green space for those residents on Edith Avenue. We believe this is the right location for this type of density. We're about 0.6 miles from the interstate going to the west on Trinity Lane, and about another 0.6 miles going east in the other direction to Ellington Parkway. And again, with the MTA route that does come up Lishy Avenue, goes around Edwin Street, and comes down Meridian Street, we have transit on each end of our property here, and we believe that this type of density will well serve that transit. The developer has also mentioned that it is a challenge to us as planners and applicants on this to plan a neighborhood and the infrastructure and the development cost to go into that, to try to keep these units at a workforce housing level. It's very important in this neighborhood that we develop and offer some workforce housing. So that's all that I have to say, I'll maintain two minutes for rebuttal, thank you.
Thank you. Two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone here wishing to speak in support of the project? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. Just like last time, you'll have two minutes and state your name and address.
Hi again, I'm sorry, I'm Ashanti Davis, I live at 321 Edwin Street. So some of the, the last time I spoke to you all, I know you guys spent a lot of time on this, and in your wisdom, we talked about the aggregate effect of all of this. So 190 are proposed up on Edwin, 158 right here. Last planning commission, you approved a 40 on Cherokee, which is a few blocks away, and then at the planning commission meeting before that, 40 were approved on Edwin. That's a lot in this neighborhood. It is a quiet neighborhood, I've been there my entire life, it's still baffling that it's, like, if I walk up to Marshall, which is two blocks up, that's maintenance and this isn't. They're pretty much the same in character, and I realize that's not y'all's problem, but I tell you that to paint a picture, that this is a quiet residential street, and to put a condo development in the middle of a residential street, no matter what corridors it's near, doesn't make sense. For example, Charlotte, major corridor, Charlotte Avenue's major, it's close to 40. As soon as you turn off of Charlotte, across from Nashville West, you're in a neighborhood. You're in a neighborhood with houses and yards, and there's no condo developments. Same thing on Gallatin, Spain Avenue is right off of Gallatin Road, so is Greenwood Avenue. As soon as you turn off of Gallatin Road, which is connected to a major corridor, it's a neighborhood. There's no condos, there's no apartment complexes, it's a neighborhood. And so I say that all to say is, like, I'm all about equity and treating neighborhoods fairly throughout Nashville, and I think policies that apply in other parts of East Nashville, like Five Points and the Greenwood neighborhood, should also apply to this neighborhood in East Nashville, and that we should, as much as I think the trailer park should be developed, the mobile home park should be developed, it should be some development in there, what the developer is doing does make sense, I just think that there's a better way to do it so that it fits the existing character. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing that, I do want to make a comment for the commissioners real quick, just that the comments that the commissioners have made since the last time, and the speaker, is that we are, we've talked to staff, I've talked to Doug, and we are really looking at ways to do a... at ways to do a compilation of around the neighborhood. It's a little more complex, because it involves mapping, but I want to tell you all that we are working on that as a staff. So just FYI, so the audience and the people know that that is something that we're trying to address. So I, and we do listen to the commissioners and the public about that. So any, let me check again. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Chairman Atkins. Just a brief rebuttal, just again to state that we do believe that this density is appropriate. This is T4 neighborhood, urban neighborhood evolving. And again, we did answer the questions of the neighborhood association, and we have received no other, further correspondence through metro planning staff of other concerns from the neighborhood that have not been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Davis, you've requested to speak on your item, so come on up.
Thank you for your time, once again volunteering, and thank you for the staff members for spending a lot of time on this project. This trailer park has been one of the problems along this corridor for a long time. I'm glad that we're cleaning up, and the 10 remaining families, five of them, we've got them into Shady Hills, which is my other large trailer park, which is in very good condition, unlike this one where there's 45 abandoned empty trailers. Now, the character may seem kind of different, but when you have 45 abandoned trailers, and seven of them where people are living in there, in those trailers, but then you have three others that should be condemned, but people are living in them, you know, sometimes as councilman it's difficult, because you've got 45 abandoned units since the May flood, which, it didn't flood in that area, but the trailers were moved from somewhere else that the previous owner thought, you know, hey, maybe I could repurpose them and rent them out, and codes, thank God for Doug and all the rest of the codes folks back then, for not allowing him to do that. And so me and this owner have had quite a bit of fights in environmental court over this place, you know, but five of the residents have been successfully relocated, are relocating to Shady Hills. So five of them, we won't have to worry about displacement. Three of them, right now, we are, we are, we are getting them assistance through, through the couple of local churches, and I believe one of the residents, the church that Highland Heights meets with, they're going to wrap their arms around one of the residents there, too, to help them find somewhere else to go. And so the other two gentlemen, it's tough, but we're looking, I'm working with their probation officer to find them a place to go, because unfortunately, you know, this is one of the places where it's certain enough feet away, so that they don't have, they can't be near certain individuals because of their past crimes, you know? So we're working hard to do that, because I know that's one of the things in my heart, I don't want anybody displaced. But let's talk about the wonderful aspects of this party, this, this property here. Sidewalks. If you remember, my constituent, Ms. Davis, very intelligent, very thoughtful, one of our best neighbors in here, and I really mean that, okay? There's a lot of intelligent neighbors in the 5th district. She lives on Edwin. Her family wanted to do what I, which I supported, and which this commission supported, to build houses. But because of different changes in Nashville needing sidewalks, you know, they were forced to do some sidewalk, expensive, and, you know, it was unfair that they were going to have to do the drainage and all the sidewalks down Edwin. But as, talking with Doug and a lot of your great staff members, a lot of that burden has been put on that developer, you know, which will benefit her street too, which benefits everybody. So there are solutions here. You know, even though condos may seem a tad bit out of character, the 45 abandoned trailers are way out of character. And, and having that abandoned properties, majority of those properties abandoned, you could imagine, you know, mosquitoes, large rodents, and other issues, you know? But also, we're taking care of those 10 residents that are still left there, and it's a great project, it's workforce-priced housing. You know, if we would have, if they would have done single-family homes, it'd be in the $400,000 range, which a lot of my constituents and people can't afford, but also, the neighbors wanted that green space, you know, for, for drainage and other activities. And once again, the developers are seeing this, you know what, we got to do more affordability. We got to give some amenities away to the neighbors, and we got to do our sidewalks, you know? We have to give more, you know? And we're accomplishing those goals. I feel that my neighborhood, and you may disagree, it's okay, planners and commissioners, we still love each other. I don't think I have enough density, because every time we want good retail, you need more rooftops, Scott, you need more rooftops. But also, the projects that came before, the other 40 units, that's Sam McCullough's property. Who fights more for units than Sam, you know? And that's the other thing, too. I'm allowing my neighbors, besides these two projects, to develop their own property and taking part of the city. And, you know, and I want to thank you for supporting that, you know, but sometimes, you know, you know, large developments like this are necessary, not just for the affordability aspect, but one thing developers do hate is passing on all those extra infrastructure things that my neighbors need, you know? Sidewalks, the extra drainage, you know, just so it just makes us all feel better, and giving up a piece of property which they could have developed, but to add more drainage and do the green space that those neighbors wanted. And I need you to support this, you know? In fact, you know, the other group couldn't go in front of Highland Heights, because this group was, was in the mix there. No one wanted everyone to get confused, and, and we wanted to distinguish between each big project, and that was accomplished, so, you know, and that may be part of the reason why they couldn't get with my neighborhood, you know, because we're dealing with one large project at a time. But once again, the neighbors will have input, and please approve this, and I just want to thank everyone for your time, and I want to thank my neighbors in support and in opposition.
Thank you, Councilman. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and Commissioner Blackshear.
I have a question for staff. I know the chair talked about our comments from the last meeting regarding how to basically look at the aggregation of units that have been approved in an area. And so this one, so this is going to permit up to 158 units, where you would otherwise have a max of 54 units, and obviously, there are other units that have been recently approved and that are going to come up before us. Can you talk a little bit about how when the staff is formulating its recommendation, it takes into consideration the aggregation of all the units that have been approved and that may come up for the commission?
So the first place that we start is by looking at the policy. And I would say, from a policy perspective, while we may not be aggregating unit counts into the way that you're asking, and we are looking at that, I would say that the policy area itself is one that holistically takes into account existing infrastructure, where the, where the main roads are, where the transportation is, what the public amenities are, and the, and the facilities. And so that, that is really our guidance for where future growth and development can occur. Sean, can you pull up the existing policy map, which might be somewhat instructive? So as you can see here, this particular property is located within an evolving area, and what evolving policy basically tells us is to anticipate moderate-to-higher-density development patterns. And so, again, while we're not necessarily aggregating units, that policy, which goes through a public process, and the boundaries are, are pretty thoughtfully devised, basically will tell us that there's, there's enough infrastructure here to evolve to a higher-intensity development pattern, and it tells us to prioritize pedestrian circulation and other forms of circulation. And so what we'll do is analyze the, the specific proposal and see whether or not it meets those principles. And we evaluated it against the, the block structure, I would say, here in this instance. We looked very carefully at the circulation pattern. And so we're also, from, again, from a policy perspective, we look at other proposals within the area, and we ask whether or not there, the relationships are there to meet the policy. And so I would say, while it's not necessarily presented as aggregated numbers, it's analyzed within the context of policy. So I do think that that's happening. In addition, the, the traffic studies that go with these will look at underlying traffic patterns, and certainly for, you know, projects like this, we would be looking at other proposals that are coming online. If that sort of answers...
Yeah, no, it does, it does answer my question. So my question was basically, before we have the, the new procedure, we have the mapping that's available to all the commissioners, we are still paying attention to all the things that are coming before us when formulating a recommendation?
Absolutely. We, so just a bit of background, so again, the, the Nashville Next really establishes for us those areas within the city that are most appropriate for the highest levels of growth, areas that are maybe less, you know, you sort of go down, it's a tiered approach. We meet with the policy team to go over these projects when they're submitted, and so we look pretty rigorously at each project and whether or not it meets the policy, and in that discussion, we look at other proposals that are within the area, either online. So for example, I can tell you that there are other zoning requests that would look at the relationship of this project and Dickerson Pike. They haven't come before you, so we didn't present it today, but we are carefully looking at whether or not this particular project, how it would or would not mesh with those other proposals, and whether it meets our planning principles. And so that, that's, that is how, we don't look at each project during the development review process in isolation.
Bob, would you like to add?
Yeah, I think Lucy explained that really well, and I think you have to sort of step back and look at, when Nashville Next was adopted, these are the types of things that were considered, where, where neighborhood-evolving areas were going to be, and what kind of existing infrastructure do those areas have versus areas farther away from the downtown area? I mean, I think on the previous case, the maps that Lisa showed explained it pretty well, that we have East Trinity Lane that's four miles from downtown, and that was a conscious decision to put evolving into these neighborhoods that are close to downtown and to allow more development to occur on streets that have bus lines like this one does, and along major arterials like, like East Trinity Lane. And so the policies that were put in place with Nashville Next were thought through, and those were, those are what, as cases come in today, we are implementing. I mean, this is, as an alternative, the, the development that we see could go further out into greenfield development sites, where you'd have to extend more sewer lines, water lines, and more infrastructure to serve those. And the thought was with Nashville Next that in certain areas, it would be appropriate to have evolving policies that would allow different housing types and slightly more density than what's there today. And so as a, as a big picture, from a big-picture standpoint, I think that's what these projects that you're seeing are doing, are filling in some of those gaps where there are larger parcels, or where they're on a, a transit line, or a bus line, or on a major arterial.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Goblen.
Well, I mean, just looking at this, this is a very difficult piece of property, the way it's just laid out in the center of a block like that. And I think it's going to be a real challenge. I think they've come up with a good solution and a good way to work it, and so it seems to fit, to me.
Commissioner Haggen, here.
Commissioner Blackshear and I just zoned in together today. So not to belabor, when you say not to, and then you do, belabor what was discussion that was already had, I think, and I appreciate, and really appreciate the explanation. I guess the question, I feel like we're SP-ing ourselves to death here. Is there, was there another zoning option that was considered, that was consistent with policy, that could have given us density? Are we going to be SP-ing our way through all of these until I leave the commission someday?
Probably so.
Okay.
Because, I mean, I think there are other districts, but they're much more open-ended, and I think to, to get the community to see what's happening and to get more support for these types of developments, they, they want the certainty of, of the design that comes with SPs. I think if you rezone this to an RM20 zoning, that could allow a variety of different kinds of multifamily, and you, and it could, you wouldn't know exactly how that was going to fit into the neighborhood. With an SP, you get to see how it's going to fit in and upfront, versus a guessing later on.
If it was, say it was another zoning, like an RM20, though you said, would that be subject to subdivision regulations?
No, it would just, if you zoned it to, I'm just picking that as a number, but that's a multifamily, RM20 is 20 units per acre, that would just go straight to codes for building permit. They could do stacked flats, they could do townhomes, they could do surface parking lots that covered half the site with a tower on one side, as long as, as long as it met the zoning code, with the same level of units. And so this one spreads the units across the site, creates a streetscape that is pedestrian-oriented, that can provide a street connection between the two streets, Meridian and Lishy, and you might not get that if you just zoned this to a straight zoning district. You might have no connections, a parking lot with a tower.
Okay. Not a good outcome. Thank you. Okay, that, that's very helpful. That's, that was where, because I keep, we keep seeing them, so I'm trying to make sure we know what the options are. And the other thing is, there's a thing in law called race to the courthouse, and I just don't want it to be race to the planning commission. So that's why when I say SP and we talk about the aggregates, that's where we're trying to get to, is, just because we're asking doesn't mean, we, we know you guys are considering it, the staff is considering it, but I think what we mean is we need to see it, and I think that you guys are doing that, but that's where, would make us more comfortable, is to be able to see it, so that we, it's death by a thousand drips, or a race to the planning commission, how fast can you get here, so that this development gets approved before that development does? That's how it feels when we, we need to know.
And that's another thing that we're, we're trying to, we're grappling with, is how to present that, because you have rezonings, but that, it doesn't mean that this one will get built tomorrow. There's plenty of rezonings that go through the process and don't get built for five, 10, 15 years. And so to say that we're going to add up all the units that were approved in the past year, some of those units won't get built for five, or 10, or 15 years, possibly.
Right, and you're not holding a place for something else to not be able to be built. Exactly. They're, it's both ways.
So it's hard, it's hard to say for sure what will happen with these after they're approved, but some of them will get built immediately, some won't.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ains, Commissioner Sims.
I really understand the need for this, and I really appreciate the developer and his sensitivity to the need in our city for affordable housing. I wish I liked this, because I think it's got to happen, but I live in a neighborhood that's R6A, and I'm trying to go, what would I feel like if somebody just came and plopped a whole big apartment complex in my own backyard? And that's a hard, hard decision for, I think, for us. And I think the lack of comment from the community is not to be taken as approval. The lack of comment is that this community's gone through a lot of upheaval, and there's not a real voice for this neighborhood. And so I don't, I don't know, I guess what I want to do is abstain, can I?
Yes, you can.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We'll record that when, when the vote comes.
Thank you.
Commissioner. Counsel, counsel lady.
Thank you. This is a tough one. I mean, I look at the lot shapes here, and you can't develop them as RS5 when you've got that long monster thing that only touches on the street for maybe 500 feet of frontage, and something, something creative is going to have to happen there, you know? Whether, whether this is the best thing or not, I'm not smart enough to know, because I'm an engineer, not an architect. So I appreciate creative attempts to, to use funny-shaped lots well, and this is a really interesting aggregation of funny-shaped lots. I mean, to me, one, one solution would be that maybe the houses on Lishy and Merit, that Meridian, look like the houses that they're beside, but that's, you lose all your stacked flats there. But that would sure make it fit the character of the neighborhood, and then you snuck behind those houses, and there's all this other stuff. My guess is financially, that's probably harder to do, but visually, it would have less impact on the, on the neighborhood, and I appreciate that. I mean, certainly, we're not exactly on the corridor, we're on some smaller streets, kind of away from the corridor, and that makes it not a slam dunk. That being said, I appreciate the, the commitment to affordable housing. I would appreciate it more if I knew for sure that there are enough units that are at similar price points to those 45 trailers that we lost, that, that we're not losing those 45 affordable units. I'm not sure we've heard enough exact numbers to know that, but that's a question I might venture to ask if I might, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Counsel, I think that's a, an answer that the councilman can provide us with.
You ready, Charlie? Just for clarification, those 45 trailers were abandoned. They've been abandoned for years. So no one was, was being displaced out of those 45. The 10 trailers that had people in it, five we've, we've had, we have relocated to... The 10 trailers that had people in it, five we've, we've had, we have relocated to Shady Hills, which is off Dickerson Road. Trinity is two streets up, so it's close to corridor, but you're right, Counsel Lady, it is off the corridor. And so the last remaining neighbors, two, because of probationary obligations, and I don't like holding someone's past deeds 15 and 20 years ago against them, you know, because it's more difficult, but we're working with their probation officers for those two individuals. The other, the other three are now in talks with other trailer parks, which is still in my district, so they're not being displaced out of the district, but closer to the corridor, those large park, trailer parks off of Trinity Lane. But out of those three that are on their way, one of them, the church folks are going to try to help because they need a little bit more help, you know? And, you know, this area, we've talked, this trailer park, we've talked about a few times at our association meetings. Highland Heights, they meet right across the street, almost at the church on the corner of Trinity, which you could throw a rock from the tip of this development right there. And part of the things, you know, when dealing with this is, is, you know, finding somewhere for those 10 individuals or families to go to. And, but the bulk of the trailer, there's about 60 trailers total in this place. It's huge. Forty-five have been abandoned for years. In fact, I'll send you guys a video of this, of this trailer park, when we walk through to identify the folks, you know what I mean, who was in there. And also, the reason why we went for smaller units was to do some affordability, and the developer is willing to add those aspects, you know, on second or third, whenever we discuss the amendments, you know what I mean, to do that, because we really want that. And they're committed, that's one of the things that they, I know a lot of my Highland Heights neighbors are concerned about, you know? So I would like for this to be approved, and I really understand your concerns, but it's hard for me to address the affordability aspect without creating density. It's hard for me to get them to pay for huge swaths of sidewalk without the density, you know what I mean, and give the green space, you know what I mean, that the neighbors want. It's, it's, I know we're trying to balance here, I know all of you are great experts, you know, but we're trying, and we're really listening to your comments and to make it, you know, as best as we can. But we need a density, because if he just did, if they just did 50 units, they, you know, wouldn't be doing the sidewalks, wouldn't be doing all these other great things that we're needing. And I would love for you to pass this, they did go in front of my association, but it's not over yet, we still have three meetings in front of our great Metro Council, just thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, I appreciate that answer. And then I've got some really picky questions if I might ask. On the revised public works, is public work still here? Good, I have a garbage question. So the original one asked where the recycling was going to go, and now it doesn't ask that anymore. Do they still need to provide recycling? Because I would, I think that's something we need to do everywhere.
The comments that were in the staff report when it was published were the last set of corrections that were requested. Since the publication of the staff report, revised plans addressing those corrections were provided, and so they indicated the location of the recycling within, on the plan, and therefore there was no longer a need for a condition addressing that.
Okay, and so that would also indicate where the pedestrian connections to transit stops has been done?
Correct, and then staff's conditions further ensure that.
Great, okay, so the fact that those aren't in your comments doesn't mean they're not in the plan?
Yeah, they revised their conditions just to reflect the items that still needed to be conditioned beyond.
Okay, good, because those are important things, and I was glad they were there. And then a question about the tree, I guess, replacement. I certainly always appreciate conservation of existing mature trees, and I applaud their efforts to do that. This would be subject to the, to the Metro Tree Forester, Metro Urban Foresters requirements in terms of.
That's correct. When they, as they move through final site plan and building permit review, that, all of those standards would apply.
Okay, thank you. I hear the neighborhood concerns, I have the luxury of knowing I'm going to get another pass at this to see how it's been revised. So I think at this point, because it's neighborhood evolving, I will be willing to support it, knowing that I get another shot at it.
Thank you, Counsel. And so I have to, I've been advised by our legal counsel about a couple of things. The first was the abstention. So as you remember, our legal counsel has advised us that just abstaining to abstain is not a best practice of the commission. So if you don't support it, Commissioner, you have to, I mean, I would suggest that you.
What if I don't? I want a half and half. Vote for it and against it.
Well, legal counsel tells me there's not a half and half vote. So, but, so think about it, I just want to remind the commission that we try not to vote because it's not to abstain, because it's hard, but because you have a conflict of interest, a true conflict. Okay. I just want, it's not me. And then the other piece is we have to remember that we have an inclusionary zoning policy, so we need to make sure that we, you know, don't, as a commission, be very careful, according to legal counsel, about adding on conditions that are not required by that policy. Okay? So just.
With that admonition, is there a way on the streets that really are trying to stay residential? I think it's going to what a councilwoman was saying, is to make it look more like it's transitioning back to single family?
Let me try to take a stab at that one. First, it might be helpful background to know that this particular area was included in a community plan amendment earlier this year to neighborhood evolving. And so it went through on consent, I'm hearing from the community plans folks who might be able to add some clarity, that they went to the neighborhood associations and talked about what evolving policy might mean and what that means in a T4 urban context. And so I think a lot of those underlying community discussions have recently happened here about the future of this area. And I would argue from an urban design perspective, that if you have streets that are more urban in character, that it's appropriate to place the more intense uses on the street and, and do so to improve the pedestrian and the streetscape standards there. I know there are some areas where I would absolutely agree with you, that, you know, retaining the residential character, the lower density character on those streets is appropriate, and we absolutely do that. I would certainly look for that kind of a plan if we were abutting a maintenance area or if we were abutting a single family residential area that, you know, in a historic district, or again, if we were looking for a transition. But I think here, given where the direction of the policy is, we actually advised the applicant that we wanted to create a strong pedestrian environment where the intense, more intense uses were at the street to engage the street as opposed to the interior of the site, which sort of is, I think from a planning perspective, we like to work inward in terms of intensity. And so that's how we would approach that question from a T4, which is again, a more urban in the transect perspective.
Any other questions? We need a motion.
Move approval of staff's recommendation.
There's been a motion to approve staff's recommendation, and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? One opposition by Commissioner Sims, and it passes. So we are on to, let's see what time it is. We've been here about an hour and 40 minutes. Does everybody want to do another or take a, let's keep, let's keep, let's keep going. All right, item 13. All right, we're ready. We're ready now. Commissioners, y'all ready? We're ready.
I haven't gotten to present much lately, so I'm going to be up here a lot tonight. So I got another one after this. Item 13, this is a text amendment, and I'm going to refer to this as the Jackson Law Title 17 amendment. I'll tell you a little bit about Jackson Law as we move through this presentation. So the.
Hold on one second, Lisa. If we could take the conversations outside of the hallway. Ma'am, if you. Thank you.
So the Jackson Law is Title 68, Chapter 211, Part 7 of Tennessee Code Annotated. What this does is it permits a local legislative body to make determinations concerning approval of landfills, expansions of existing landfills, or changes in landfill classification. The TCA outlines the criteria for review for that local legislative body. It requires public notice and a public hearing at the council level, which would require an ordinance adoption. Our Metro Council recently, in April, adopted, opted into Jackson Law, this section of Tennessee Code Annotated. The proposed amendments to Title 17 bring Title 17 in a lot, they align Title 17 with this Jackson Law that was adopted previously. So it makes landfills a use permitted with condition as opposed to a special exception where they currently lie. Landfills currently require a special exception approval by the border zoning appeals. Because Metro Council has opted into Jackson Law, this amendment makes those a permitted with condition and adds council approval as one of the conditions of approval. And so essentially, this is kind of a housekeeping amendment in that it, the law has been opted into by council already. Staff recommends approval as this is necessary to fully implement Jackson Law, which was adopted in April by council.
Thank you. And so this is a little bit different, it's not just, it's a text amendment, so we still have to open the item for public hearing. The councilman has already spoke on this particular issue, you've heard them. Is anyone wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, well, and I want to make sure the councilman's not in the room. We'll close this item for public hearing, and how about we start with you, Counsel Lady, since this is a.
Thank you. I'll just, maybe the staff can back me up on this. My understanding of this is that before we adopted the Jackson Law, council felt like we did not have enough input into where landfills were cited because it was simply a BZA special exception ruling. And so in light of some things that may be happening in specific council districts and certainly constituents having opinions, it was, it was felt like we would, we would be served better as a county if we adopted the Jackson Law, and that's, that's why the council, after much debate, much education, I mean, we all kind of became experts on words we'd never heard before, we felt like this was a better option for us. And as I understand it, this is simply making the zoning 17 chapter be consistent with what we have already debated ad nauseam, almost, was better for the council, so I'm going to support it.
Well, let's, let's do this. Is there anyone on the commission, is any other questions? Hannah?
I'll move approval.
All right, there's, there's a motion to approve, is there, is there a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Ayes have it, this item's adopted. Let's see, we want to keep moving, you know, two more items. You guys want to keep moving on or take a quick break? Want to check, feel the pulse. How about, how about this, how about we take a quick five-minute break? And we've been here almost two hours, so I think that would be helpful. So let's take a quick break, it'd be five, 10 minutes, and then we'll be back. Okay. All right, we're going to resume the meeting again, and we are on item, I'll make sure, okay, item number 18. All right, here we go.
The next item on this evening's agenda is item 18. This is a request to create two lots on property located at 4520 Shies Hill Road. Staff's recommendation is to, staff's recommendation is to disapprove. This aerial image shows the immediate context of the site, and the location is roughly 485 feet south of Lone Oaks Circle. Site is currently zoned RS20, which requires a minimum 20,000 square foot lot size and is intended for single-family dwellings. The policy for the site is conservation and T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance, which is intended to preserve the general character of developed suburban residential neighborhoods. The proposed final plat shown in this image illustrates the configuration of the proposed Section 3.5.2 of the subdivision regulations establishes the criteria for reviewing infill subdivisions and for determining their compatibility in neighborhood maintenance policies. The zoning code requires that both of the proposed lots meet the minimum standards of the RS20 zoning district. Street frontage, the proposed lots will have frontage along a public street. For lot frontage, we perform the following analysis, which requires that the lots contain equal to or greater than 70% of the average frontage, frontage of the surrounding parcels or with, or equal to or greater than the surrounding lot with the least amount of frontage, and whichever is greater. And I will note that we look at the five parcels on either side that are oriented to the same block face. So in this instance, the lots created must be equal to or greater than 128 of street frontage, and that's for each lot. Neither of the lots as proposed meets the requirement for frontage. So Lot 60A has a proposed frontage of 112.39 feet, Lot 60B has a proposed frontage of 84.73 feet. Both lots, again, would be required to contain no less than 128 feet of frontage. For area, we apply the same criteria as far as, as far as the 70% standard, and must be the average of the surrounding parcels, again, we use the same five, and it must be equal to or greater than the surrounding lot with the least amount, and we take whichever is greater of that analysis. So in this instance, Lot 60A has a proposed size of 24,754 square feet. 70% of the average, which would be the requirement, because it is the larger of the two, when we performed the analysis, would require that Lot 60A contained 41,006 square feet, and Lot 60B would be required to contain the same amount of area. Continuing, the following criteria must also be met. The street setbacks, future development must comply with the appropriate street setbacks as for the RS20 zoning district. Lot orientation, both lots are consistent with the surrounding parcels in regard to their orientation towards Shies Hill Road. And all of the review agencies that have reviewed this final plat have recommended In conclusion, staff finds that the lots resulting from the proposed final plat would not achieve harmony with the surrounding neighborhood, and therefore staff recommends disapproval.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Applicant, come forward. We've got 10 minutes, and you can reserve two of the 10 for rebuttal.
My name is Andy Gillespie, I'm with Forsite, the, representing the applicant. Understand planning's comments regarding the infill subdivision. However, if you look at the larger surrounding area, not just the five immediate, even behind the lot, there's a .57 acre lot that has two units on it. Just to the north, there's a .5 acre lot, and another one to the north of that. So the lot sizes are consistent with the neighborhood. The, they're still .57 acres, they're still very buildable. One of the concessions we'd like to propose, or the client would be okay with, would be one common driveway for both. one common driveway for both lots, the way it wouldn't feel like two lots, with an ingress egress easement down the middle, so that instead of two driveways, again, it would feel like one property. And, that's really about all I have to say.
Thank you. We'll reserve two minutes for your rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support? In support? Oh, in support, come on up. And you have two minutes, state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Tony Ewing, I live at 4516 Shies Hill Road. My lot is directly to the left of their home. I, I think mine's a little less square footage, it's about a half acre lot. I feel like the, the concept they are proposing is fitting with the community. I've lived there since 2008, and I think their plan will work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? And if y'all would just come up to the microphone, two minutes, state your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Pat McCauley. I live at 4511 Glendale Place, which is downhill from there. I agree with the staff recommendation to deny the request for lot subdivision. Proposed lot widths would be inconsistent with the surrounding lots. The resulting lot proportions will force the construction of narrow and deep houses. This type of development is inconsistent with the entire length of Shies Hill Road. We understand the property owner's desire to cash out when they sell their property, but what is the benefit to the neighborhood? In this case, the only benefit is to the seller. We request that you accept the recommendation of the planning staff and deny the lot subdivision. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Two minutes, state your name.
Hi there, I'm Jeanie Herron, I'm at 4400 Shies Hill, just down the street. I agree with Pat. I think the staff recommendation that this be denied is good. The lot size, the width of the lot is not according to the same neighborhood, so the proportion of the width is the problem here on this. Everybody's width is at least the width that they're requesting, so please deny this subdivision. Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up.
My name is Jack Milam, and I live on Lone Oaks Circle in 1305, so I'm around the corner down the street. I would take exception with Tony Ewing, who just came up here and spoke in favor of this. Tony Ewing lives in that great big house, he's already got a lot. Tony Ewing has, has developed a mess on this street, and he's looking to further develop another mess. I am a lifelong resident of Green Hills, 68 years old. My family, immediate and otherwise, have had homes in Bellmead, Forest Hills, Oak Hill. My mother, by the way, for a little flavor, is a 1936 graduate of East High School. So, we have a lot of family connections and a lot of Nashville. I know what the flavor of a neighborhood should be. Have lived in Green Hills all of my life, and I agree with the staff recommendation in requesting that this be denied. This is not what the neighborhood should be, and Tony Ewing is misrepresenting this, I respectfully say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none? So, you've already spoke, thank you. Now, there's a rebuttal, and the developer, the applicant can come speak. Would the developer like to rebut? Two minutes? I'm going to take that as a, as a no. Well, that, ma'am, the developer has to speak. Are you the developer? The applicant? Are you the applicant? Is she going to? Okay, okay, you can speak for two minutes, ma'am. We just want to make sure, we don't want to be unfair. Thank you.
First of all, I want to say that I redo houses in Birmingham, and I appreciate being before y'all today. I've been there, on that house, in that house for the last 55 years. We too have been in Green Hills for the last almost 80 years. My dad died about 12 years ago, my mom continues to live there, and we in no way want to do anything that will harm that area. That was not anything that we were doing. And Tony, by the way, is a neighbor, but he has no hands or no strings involved with this at all with regard to development. I was here when he did come before y'all to, they did through the lot farther to the left of his house that is up there. But, this house would still, if I'm not wrong, would be, it's not going to be a squatty house, it's not going to be a little house. We still have better than a half acre lot, and the, this is not going to do anything, it would be pretty much in keeping with the other homes that are on that street, very much in keeping with Mr. Ewing's house. So, that's what I have to say, and you're looking at probably, I think we said a 60, a 60-foot width house, so it's not going to be a Cracker Box house. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. I think councilman is not here yet, I think he sent, sent in a letter. Right, yeah. So seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and I want to remind the commissioners that this is a subdivision, so we're the last, you know, doesn't go to council, so just FYI. Council lady, you want to go first?
Thank you. I think we have rules to go by, and they're, they're spelled out pretty, pretty explicitly here. In terms of whether it meets the lot frontage compatibility and the lot size compatibility, it doesn't. So then that pushes us to the, do we think it's harmonious development? And just looking at the sizes of all the other homes and lots, from what I can see on here, I'm not sure, I appreciate the offer of the, the one central driveway, but I'm not, I'm not sure that's what it would take to make it be considered harmonious with the rest of the neighborhood. And also, the, the requirement to look at five, five lots on the street as opposed to just going to whatever size wider circle might bring in some that are compatible, I think we're, we're pretty well instructed to be consistent with that, so that I think we need to, to stay with that. And I was involved as a council member when we went through and redid the subdivision regs, and there was a lot of community input, and, and strong feeling that it was really important to look at nearby context as opposed to faraway context. So I feel like the staff analysis is very thorough, and I agree with it.
Commissioners.
I would like to make sure we put in record the, from Councilman Pulley, that he opposes this, and I take seriously our councilman's advice on these kind of things. And I also want to channel my predecessor, Stuart Clifton, and say I don't like spot zoning. That's it.
Okay.
Ms. Herron.
I'm going to support staff's recommendation.
All right, Ms. Herron.
So am I. I think it's pretty clear.
Ms. Herron, you're welcome.
I also support staff's recommendation, and I'd like to make a motion.
That's a proper motion. She's making.
A move to accept staff's recommendation of disapproval.
It's been a motion to disapprove. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of disapproval, say aye. Opposed, no? Ayes have it, and it's disapproved. We're on item number 21.
Okay, item 21. This is a request to rezone from R10 to RS10. Staff recommendation is to disapprove as submitted and approve with a substitute ordinance. The property is located along Grandview Drive and Ackerman Court between Granny White Pike and Leland Lane. The existing zoning is R10, which is residential one and two-family. The land use policy for the area is conservation, which recognizes a stream that runs through the north of the area along with some floodplain to the south, as well as T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance. Neighborhood maintenance is a policy that is intended to preserve and enhance the existing character of residential neighborhoods. I should note that both R10 and RS10 are supported by neighborhood maintenance policy. Staff has evaluated the proposal, which is, the properties shown in gray are the original submittal. Staff evaluated it and recommends removal of certain properties from the debris zoning. The properties that staff recommends a removal of are those hatched in black. The ones that staff is recommending removal of are, for the most part, existing duplexes. You can see, where you see these lots that kind of have these two little separate boxes on it, those, those are horizontal property regimes that have been developed as duplexes. And so staff is recommending removal of the existing duplexes, and also removal of the larger corner lot. Oh, I don't know, goodness, okay, there we go, I'm so sorry. So staff is recommending removal of those, the existing duplexes along with that larger lot. There is one existing duplex that staff is recommending remains in the downzoning. There is one that has a much more narrow frontage than the other existing, and if it were, it's an existing attached duplex. If it was to redevelop, it wouldn't maintain the same character along the street, and so staff is recommending that that duplex do remain in the downzoning. Otherwise, removing the two-family parcels from the zone change and that corner allows for the existing development pattern to be maintained, and allows for a mixture of housing types to continue to exist in the area, which meets the goals of the policy.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. You want to go first, councilman, or you want to?
I may.
Yes, please, come on up.
Thank you so much, commissioners, for the viewing audience at home. I am Brett Withers. My home address is 1113 Granada Avenue, way over in East Nashville, and I'm the Metro Council Representative for District 6. My colleague, Councilmember Russ Pulley, was unable to be here today, but does have this item on the public hearing agenda for next Tuesday's council meeting, and he worked with the council office, and they requested that I come and try to fill in for Councilmember Pulley, and since he's one of the tallest members of the council, and I'm one of the shortest, I should probably stand on a chair or something, but, but I'm not able to do that. I have had an opportunity to review the staff report, speak with the staff reviewer, I was able to take a drive down that street recently to familiarize myself with it, and actually took a look again today during my lunch break from work, because I work nearby there. We do have a lot of interest sometimes in that portion of the county in particular in having growth in some areas, but preserving other areas. There was a request, as I understand it, initially to look at both a contextual overlay as a tool for maintaining the character of the neighborhood, as well as a zone, base zone change. The, there were two full community meetings, as I understand it, as well as some individual meetings. The neighborhood has some representatives here that can review statistics of those results, where they polled the property owners in the area. The contextual overlay had some support, but less support than the base zone change. One of the things that I observed as I went down the area is that, you know, anytime you have an overlay that you're looking at putting in place, it's best to do that as a neighborhood preservation tool before redevelopment occurs significantly on the street. And as you can see from the horizontal property regimes that are already recorded on the street, you know, a fair amount of development has already happened with structures that, in some cases, have front-loading garages and things like that. So, with the contextual overlay application, some of the height and lot coverage maximums have already been achieved within that buildable zone, and the contextual overlay would, would not necessarily preserve that specific element that, that we're looking for, which is a lack of front-loading garages and things like that. So for a contextual overlay for this small of an area, it's conceivable that, that, that that, that community character has already been modified in a way that, that the contextual overlay would not be successful in preserving. However, the base zone change would continue to allow redevelopment, of course, and on lots that are being recommended for a base zone change to RS. Certainly, the, the building itself could be demolished and replaced, however, it would be feasible to have garage access and driveway access, since there would only be one located in a different, not necessarily in a front-loading manner, if the architect chooses to do that. I do appreciate the staff recommendation of support of a substitute. I think that, I don't like to make a duplex legally non-conforming use if we don't have to, so I think that makes a lot of sense. The removal of the lot on the corner, which is currently a parking lot, definitely makes sense. There may be another plan in the future that can accommodate growth perhaps along Granny White, in a, in a manner that, that supports transit and walkability. I think that is an excellent choice of a lot to remove from a downzoning. I do have a little bit of information from the neighbors that was also passed along to me through the council office. I will defer to staff if they wanted to talk about the number of, the calculation of lots on the street that are already either duplexes or that would remain duplex Ls, we'll all defer to staff for that statistic, and I think neighbors may have that as well. It's my understanding that from the property owner surveying that was done by the neighborhood and Councilmember Pulley, for both the contextual overlay and for the downzoning, that there is one of these lots, which is on the north side of Grandview, it is the very first one, I think it's marked as parcel 1112, that that property owner actually signed in support of this zone change. And so, if you do approve the substitute, which I hope you do, I would request that you perhaps amend the substitute to go ahead and reflect that as being a zone change to RS, in order to follow the wishes of that property owner in the survey. There is a group of neighbors who are here in support today, and I appreciate all the work that they have done in this community, and Councilmember Pulley have done to figure out what is the, the best route forward for development in this neighborhood. I'm sure they will all speak to that process in more detail than I could, because I was not present at those meetings. There is also, my understanding, one property owner who owns two parcels, one of which is being recommended for removal to remain RS, but one that is not. The staff recommendation is, this, this is for the southwest corner of Leland and Grandview, the staff recommendation is that that parcel be changed to RS. Partly, I understand in looking at the flood, floodplain that impacts that parcel so greatly, I think staff perhaps can speak to that a little bit more if they need to, but I know that the property owner is here and is wanting to speak on that as well. In deference to my, both to the staff recommendation and to my council colleague Pulley, I'm going to ask you today to go ahead and leave that parcel, and if Councilmember Pulley and that property owner reach an agreement through the public hearing process later, he could certainly later remove that from the downzoning. But at this moment in time, I'm going to request that you go ahead and, and support that zone change on that particular parcel. So again, the two items for discussion, from my standpoint, that I hope that you will discuss, are for parcel 1112, that that one should be added back in basically to the zone change, and then for parcel 1001, that it be left in the zone change. So, does, then we have any questions about that? I'll be happy to speak to those in my rebuttal.
Thank you, councilman. Thank you. We'll definitely save you time for rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Y'all come on up, and two minutes each, and just state your name and your, and, and for the sake of time, try not to say, repeat the same items, the same arguments, because...
Right.
Right. Russ gave us some background on that.
Oh, perfect.
We will do our best to be concise.
He was prepping y'all, okay.
He told us to be concise. Okay, I'm Joan Cato, and I live at 1017 Grandview Drive, and I've been the point person on this project for our street and our neighborhood. I support the rezoning to RS10 for Grandview Drive and Ackerman Court to maintain the character of the neighborhood. In February, some of our neighbors got together and talked about the changes happening since some of these single-family homes are being knocked down. The house across, next to me and the house across from me have both been knocked down, and they're building two homes in their place. I've lived there 25 years and raised my family there with my husband. So we talked about what we could do. We talked to the Gray Bar neighbors one block up. If you're familiar with the neighborhood, it should be listed, one block north, they, about their RS10 rezoning and contextual overlay. We wanted to understand why they did it, how they did it, did it, how does it work for your neighborhood and how the neighbors felt about it. Their neighborhood passed it, I believe, almost unanimously. So we reached out to Councilmen, I reached out to Councilman Polley to find out how to pursue rezoning. We held numerous community meetings that he attended, and we had a representative from the planning staff, Patrick Napier, and a planner from the council office, Brandon Burnett, attend meetings. We had really good turnout at these meetings. Neighbors were given the opportunity to ask questions, and hear answers from the planning staff and council office. We had very good discussion. I feel like everyone got their concerns on the table. We conducted a survey for two issues, the rezoning to RS10 and the contextual overlay. This was sent to all neighbors. We made sure we got the addresses through the council office, or however, Russ told me to get it. We also knocked on doors and talked to people. But I do need to give you the statistics, and I think at the front end, I lost 10 seconds, so can I have 10 more seconds?
10 seconds.
Okay. The statistics are, we had 77% of the neighbors respond to the survey. Of those responding to RS10, 84% were in favor, most of them are here, and 16% were opposed. The people opposed were developers that owned the properties already.
Okay, that's your 10 seconds.
Okay, that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Mary Beth Nicholson. I live at 3705 Ackerman Court, which is one of the lots in the discussion that we're having tonight. We moved to the area two years ago. I moved with my husband and my two young sons. We moved because we liked the historic value and the green space that's been in that neighborhood. In the last two years, we've seen substantial changes. So multiple single-family units have now become double-family units. And what we've seen with those changes is increases in traffic. We don't have sidewalks, so we rely on our roads for all of our, you know, bike riding and walking, and we've seen a lot of increased traffic. We're also in a watershed area, as been described. We've been seeing increased drainage through that area. One of these areas is right by my house. We've already seen some trouble with increased drainage in that area. We've had increase in our noise pollution as well, so we've seen a lot of changes. We're also not opposed to some diversity in the neighborhood. We're actually excited about that. The difficulty is, is that now we're at a place where we have 38% of our houses in this area are now double-family units. And so what we're trying to do is preserve the ones that we have so that we can continue to maintain that historic diversity that we're really proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jay Gore. I live at 1103 Grandview Drive. We moved in 26 years ago. We've raised our family here, and we've watched our neighbors, excuse me, raise theirs. We have a great street with a lot of diversity already. I think the stats have already come out, 38 or 40% of double, of two-family dwellings. We have a lot of families, both young and old, lots of kids, ride their bikes, families walk the streets, play ball in the yards. We support the rezoning so that we can maintain the diversity, character, and charm of our neighborhood. We are in favor of sensitive development that recognizes floodplain issues that already exist in our, in our area. In the 26 years my family's lived there, we've noticed, and you see the drainage ditch issues, we've seen more water. Everything that comes off of Hillsborough Road to our side travels down to Browns Creek, either through ditches or through waterways in the back of some of those properties. In those 26 years, we've seen that do nothing but increase. Our fear is that with the continued loss of pervious soil, that problem will do nothing but grow. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mackey Lufman. I live with my family at 3701 Ackerman Court, which is within the area being where we request the zoning change. To support your priority to maintain the character of the neighborhood, I do want to share an anecdote about my own experience. My family moved there in June of 2002. We taught our older children how to ride their bikes on Ackerman Court and Grandview, developing the habit of riding from our home down the streets to that corner lot that they mentioned that is the parking lot for the Granny White Church of Christ. As our kids became more capable, we felt comfortable letting them ride on their own without an adult supervising them, and that maintained that pattern, and we kept up that pattern through the early 2000s. Since then, the population density in the neighborhood has grown sharply, and with it come an increase in residential and commercial traffic on both Grandview and surprisingly Ackerman Court, as some residents and other people look for new cut-throughs to avoid Green Hills traffic. Two years ago, my oldest child got her driver's learner's permit. The residential density and the resulting traffic have grown so much that she did not feel safe learning how to drive in our own neighborhood. So we had to drive to other locations in more distant, less populated neighborhoods to teach her how to drive, and we anticipate that as my next child, who has just got his learner's permit, we're going to have to do the same thing with him. Traffic in Nashville is obviously a complex problem that will need complex solutions, but I use this anecdote to show the direct consequences of rapid increases in population density. More than a third of the lots inside of the area of the proposed, of the proposed change are already two-family units, which provides a greater diversity of housing than some of our neighboring streets and blocks. The demographics of those two-family units have changed from 2002, when they were predominantly university students who were walking and biking to school, to families who are working and receiving deliveries and visitors in their homes. So I ask that you propose the substitute, or that you approve the substitute ordinance to maintain the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
I'll be brief. My name is Abby Lufman, and I live at 3701 Ackerman Court, and I thank you for your work on the development of our city, and I would ask that you approve with the downzone request that we made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Clayton Gore. I live at 1103 Grandview, and I've lived there almost 26 years. I'm still rounding up. Changing zoning of the street to RS10 would keep intact the familial character of the neighborhood and encourage a sense of community that I think would otherwise be at risk. I'm in full support of the other reasoning that's been presented and, excuse me, and thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is John Davidson. I live at 1608 Tynne Boulevard. My sister is a student at Lipscomb University and was a student at Lipscomb Academy as well, and we spent long days walking the neighborhoods, and I support the adoption of the RS10 adopted, the substitute measures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Leslie Mitkowski, and I own a house that's adjacent to Grandview Drive, and I stand with those who support the adoption of RS10 zoning, and I fully endorse their reasoning. Thank you for your time.
May I give us the address, please?
Pardon?
The address?
12, I'm sorry, 1226 Grandview Drive.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stacy McGwin. I live at 1105 Grandview Drive. I've lived there for 15 years with my two children. I am in strong support of what everyone has said so far, and I am in support of changing the zone. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deborah O'Reddick. I live near Grandview Drive on South Observatory, just across from the David Lipscomb campus. I frequently walk around this neighborhood, and I also take care of my mother, who lives on Grandview multiple days and nights of the week. I concur with what others have said in support of the zoning change to RS10. Thank you.
Just state the address for the record.
1403 Grandview.
Thank you.
I think he wants your house number.
Your house.
Oh, my house number. I apologize. 1626 South Observatory.
That's my sister.
I could tell.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Gore, and I've lived on Grandview Drive at 1103, near its intersection with Ackerman Court since 1991. We've, we've raised our family there, and my mother, who's almost 92, now lives with us. I adopt all of the reasons set out by those who've spoken in support before me. I am in support of this zoning change to RS10, as I believe it's the best way to preserve the historical character and harmony of my neighborhood. I appreciate y'all's time. I appreciate reading the emails that I know I wrote, I helped send in from other neighbors that were having issues, but I know that there's a lot of emails in support of this as well, and we appreciate your consideration of this matter.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Valerie Duncan. I live at 1010 Grandview, and I just ask that you please give us our wish and support our zoning to RS10. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Wendy Lunsford, 1013 Grandview Drive. We bought our house in 1991, when my smallest child was a year old, and I support, is it RS10? Okay, okay. Could remember the number. To preserve the neighborhood as it is. Thank you.
My name's John Cato. I live at 1017 Grandview Drive, and my wife and I have lived in this house for 25 years, have raised our kids there, and I definitely approve, I would like you to approve the change to RS10.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up.
You should have a copy of what I'm about to read.
Okay.
My name is Elaine Bright, and I reside at 1001 Grandview Drive. I'm asking for a corner exemption. The corner lot on the south side of Grandview and Leland has been my personal home for 28 years, has been surrounded by multifamily properties for all those years. These multifamily properties are all exempt. I plan to age in place at this location, but also want to have options for developing the property like the rest of my immediate neighbors. For your awareness and consideration, two dwelling units are the majority historical contextual fabric on the south side of Grandview from Ackerman to Leland, instead of a single-family homes, and has been since the street was developed in the 40s. Also, to my rear, the next corner, Caudill, is a duplex and will also remain R10. During meetings with our councilmen and planning staff, it was conveyed, it was not a promise but that corner lots can generally be exempt from downzoning if exemption is asked for. For example, it appears that all corner properties on Leland in last year's Grandbar downzoning remained R10. When Grandview neighbors started this downzoning process, I requested this exemption for my corner lots early and often. I did not hear anyone publicly oppose this corner lot exemption in these meetings. In fact, the leaders of this downzoning encouraged me to seek this exemption. It is my understanding staff did not recommend exemption because property is shown in the floodplain zone. I served on the Stormwater Management Appeal Board from 2007 to 2014. Dwellings can be built in a floodplain without appeal if it meets all the requirements in the Stormwater Management Manual. 1009 Grandview is an example, which was completed over the past year, did not require an appeal. I request my property of 1001 for the same future opportunity. To recap, an exemption should be allowed for 1001 Grandview because a corner lot precedence for exemption was indicated to me in informal meetings. It will be RS10 spot zoning at this corner if not exempt. Stormwater Manual allows for new development that complies with all requirements in a floodplain. As an architect and former Stormwater Committee Vice, I know it can be easily accomplished at 1001.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, rebuttal?
Thank you so much, Commissioners. Just again, I know we have maybe not all the neighbors spoken in favor, but if anyone, those who are in support, please raise your hands. So that's quite a large group, and I just want to congratulate the neighbors themselves, including the lady who is in opposition, but just want to really congratulate everyone for all the work that's gone into this discussion to this point to get us here. Again, I'm going to recommend approval of the staff recommendation for the substitute, including for parcel 1001. I definitely think the property owner there has some good cases to make. The staff recommendation notwithstanding was not to include that particular parcel, and I would request that you approve the substitute with the one amendment that I referenced, which is that 1112 Grandview, go ahead and be changed to RS because the property owner has signed a petition in favor of that. The decision of whether or not to include 1001 in the downzoning is a political decision that Councilmember Polley can make. We'll certainly, I'm sure, hear more feedback about that in a couple of days, Councilmember Allen. And the Planning, Zoning, and Historical Committee will also have an opportunity to make a recommendation as those discussions continue, but at this time, I would recommend, request approval of the substitute with 1112 being, being removed from the substitute and left in the downzoning, and 1001 being moved to RS. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll close the public hearing, and how about we start with Commissioner Haynes?
So staff, I'm a tad confused. Lot 152, Councilman Withers is asking to stay in and not have it removed. Is that correct?
Right, and we tried, for the sake of discussion, what we did on this map, and the reason that you see these numbers, or the numbers that are on your screen are the actual addresses, because that's how people kind of talk about them, and so instead of putting parcel numbers, we put the addresses on here to, hopefully for ease of conversation. And so I believe it's this parcel here, which is 1112 Grandview, that is indicated as an existing duplex, which was one of the reasons that, and has a substantial frontage, which is one of the reasons that staff recommended removal. But it's my understanding that that owner is in support of that property being zoned to RS10.
Okay.
From, yes, and from correspondence.
All right, and can you speak to the opponent of this on 1001, on her desires?
Sure. So when we, when we look at these downzones, and you all have seen quite a few of them, you know, some of them are just a street, some of them are much larger, and so our approach when we're looking at these is that we, we sort of start by looking at the existing land use pattern. We want to see where there are existing duplexes, if there's a pattern of development, if there's an existing diversity of housing. So we do research with our codes department to make sure we understand where there are legal duplexes, and so that was kind of our starting point with this one. We looked at that, we saw that there were a number of legal duplexes. I think it was around 35% from what we've shown. And so we kind of saw that, we marked those, we took the larger one that's on Granny White Pike and said, let's remove that one as well. It's not within a floodplain, it is a larger property, it's fronting on a more major street. And so we felt like that that provided enough of a diversity to keep for the area, and so that's why we made that recommendation. Now, looking at 1001, although it is on a corner, and sometimes that is a criteria that we will look at in removing lots, because it's within the floodplain almost fully, we weighed that to be more important, and so therefore we'd not recommend removal of that, and also because it was an existing single-family.
So can you speak to the opponent's comment about things can get approved in the floodplain, and if you look at lot address 1003, 1003, right next to it, it almost entirely sits in the floodplain, and yet you're excluding it?
And the reason that we're excluding that one is because it is already a legally-constructed duplex. And so we do try to avoid, when possible, the creation of a nonconforming use. Sometimes that can make things more difficult from a financing standpoint, and so we try it when we can. And so even though it's not ideal, because it is in the floodplain, it is a legally-existing duplex, and that was the reason that we did. You can certainly build in the floodplain, there are, there are extra requirements, but we do consider that to be an environmentally sensitive piece, and so we wouldn't necessarily want to encourage additional development where it doesn't already exist.
Okay, that answers my questions.
Commissioner Haynes?
I would like to come, have, listen for a minute.
That's fine, yeah, that's perfect. Council lady?
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand, the reason you don't support in the floodplain is simply because you're trying to discourage any additional impervious surface or things that block water flowing?
Right, I mean, any kind of, we wouldn't want to encourage additional density where we know that there is an environmentally sensitive feature, such as a floodplain, and taken in concert with... And taken in concert with the fact that we felt like that there was an adequate number of existing diversity of housing, so we wouldn't necessarily look at that as being a prime location, given the constraints on the property.
Thank you. Is there a possibility for subdivision of that lot at some point? I'm seeing a shorter lot next door to it that looks like it may have been.
I think it's probably unlikely that that could be subdivided, given the configuration of the lot. If they were to try to subdivide it towards Grandview, and knowing that this is a neighborhood maintenance policy, compatibility is going to apply. I don't have the exact numbers, but just eyeballing it, I don't think that you would be able to split it and get two lots. If they tried to subdivide it to front on Leland Lane, it's not going to probably meet the size requirement for the ones that go south there. So I think, and I can't be, can't give you 100% assurance of that, that it wouldn't meet compatibility, but it doesn't look like it would be able to be subdivided, given the size of surrounding lots.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to listen. I know this has got the council process to go through as well, so we can continue to have the discussion about this one particular property. Everything else, I think, is very clear, that you've done a good job of getting very strong neighborhood support, and I appreciate that.
Commissioner Blackshear? Commissioner Goblen?
Well, I think I understand all this. So certainly with the kind of support we're getting, I don't see a problem with the downzoning aspect of that in general. I understand why staff is saying some of these things should not be included because of existing conditions. You know, it kind of troubles me that you got one lot in, two lots out, that kind of thing. But in as far as lot 1112, I don't have a problem with that if the guy wants, if the people want to do it. I'm inclined to let 1001 be removed. The, you know, it's on a corner, it's the other end of the lot, there's nothing across the street, nothing beside it. You know, even though it does have the floodplain issues, I'm sympathetic to that, but I'm inclined to say, you know, those can be, that can be worked with or not, but that may prohibit a multifamily, I mean, two families. But anyway, that's kind of where I am.
Back to you, Commissioner Sims, if you have any comments, or you don't have to.
First of all, I'd really like to say congratulations to this, to, you really have modeled for a community how to come together to solve a complex problem, so I like that. I'm new to this, so if you think this guy's confused, you can imagine what I am. But I'm a little concerned that what, if I'm getting this correct, that we've got 15 exempted and 25 that are not, which almost divides the neighborhood if they have to later come up with some type of consensus.
There are 39 total properties, and there are 15 that have been removed. There just happens to, I mean, you know, all of the, each of the downzones, and each time that we look at these, they're all different, really. There have been a couple where we haven't recommended removal of any parcels. There have been some where we only recommend removal of corner lots or larger properties because there are no existing duplexes. This happens to be a bit of a unique area in that there is an existing pretty high diversity of housing, and so we took that into consideration and really wanted to maintain that. And if you, north of the area, Gray Bar Lane, you can kind of see where you've got some juts down and up and down and up. So that was recently rezoned as well, downzoned. And so where you see this is, this is RS 10, and then there's an existing that stayed R 10 here. Or this went to RS 10, this stayed R 10. Went to RS 10, stayed R 10. So you see a little bit of this in a larger, broader pattern within this neighborhood. It just happens to be a neighborhood that already has an existing pretty high percentage of diversity of housing. And so we were trying to maintain that and also trying to limit the number of, limit, if we could, the number of non-conforming uses that we created.
I think my question really is, and I did go walk this neighborhood and really look at it with you guys, not with you, but I was there looking around, and that the community is trying to solve a pretty tough problem here in that they're trying to keep character all while, I mean, this is almost 40% of it is going the other direction. So I'm trying to figure out what's the solution that helps them hang on to the character all while exempting the properties that may need it for other reasons, so.
Well, I think the character is a mixture of single-family and two-family. And so this downzoning really does maintain that existing character. On this street, that is the character. And you have some more traditional-style duplexes, what we think of, in an individual one building, and then you have some that have been redeveloped and are in detached duplexes. And so, you know, in this case, exempting these lots, downzoning the remainder actually does maintain. It meets the goals of the neighborhood maintenance policy in that it is maintaining the existing character that they do have.
I think just in terms of consensus building, that's so close to 50% that it gets difficult in other arenas. But y'all know more about the property, so I'm satisfied with what you guys are asking, so.
All right. Any, it's time to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve staff's substitute ordinance, but leave in 1112 and add back 1001.
I'll second that. Wait. To keep in 1212.
1112. To leave that in the downzoning.
To change it from R to RS.
Correct.
On 1112.
Correct. Part of the owner's request. And to add back in 1001 into the area to be excluded from the downzone.
An R.
Correct.
Remain R.
Correct.
Yeah. I'll second the motion.
So to take 1001, to exempt 1001 from the rezoning?
Correct.
Okay. One slight change from what the councilman said is that we're just basically keeping 1001 R.
Okay.
Can I ask you two questions?
Yes, ma'am.
One, I'd be interested to know what Councilmember Pulley, if he has a strong opinion about that, I mean, if he doesn't, then that's, I'm good. If he does, I wish I knew that before I voted today. And then secondly, if it turns out he does have a strong opinion one way or another, can we adjust that later or not?
I think the councilman can adjust it.
The council bill is filed as it is. We're recommending a substitute. It doesn't have to be substituted. It may affect, it may be a disapproval when it gets to the council if it's not consistent with what the commission has recommended. But that's something that I think we would look at, what, how significant the change is, and we can talk to Mike Jamison during that process and determine how significant whatever change is the council makes and whether that's substantially different than what the commission recommended.
Gotcha. I mean, I think the requests to take it out are very logical. I just want to make sure I don't put the council member in a box. If he has strong feelings, does this still keep his options open? Is, I would hate for him to deal with the disapproved bill if we don't have to do that by waiting until later and letting us take it out at the next step when I know it won't be a disapproved bill. Am I, or can I, can I assume that we can have options both directions?
I mean, I think you could make the, a lot of times we have a recommendation to disapprove without the commission's conditions, but I think in this kind of case, if the, I think the way I see it, you're taking one out and putting one in, and it's still the same number of parcels that's being recommended, I think you could make clear that if the council member adjusts one of these, that it may not change the recommendation of the commission. That's something that, as long as it's not a wholesale change of what the commission has recommended, if it's just one parcel here or there, then I think that that's something that could probably still be considered as the commission recommended without a change in the, without it changing to a disapproval.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Any other questions? That was a proper motion. And a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Ayes have it with those recommendations. All right. We, we are on.
The issue with all these duplex lots.
Historic, and our historic rep is not here. Brendan's not here, on Parks. We don't have an executive committee report. I will just say that if you all could, make sure that you let Kelly know if it's still vacation season. And if everybody could quietly exit. Wait a second. Thank you all for coming down. We really appreciate it.
Well, I'm not teaching you. I'm just pointing something out.
Yeah. So we don't have our historic rep here or Parks rep, executive committee. I just remind you guys that we're still in vacation summer season, so make sure you let Kelly, if you're going to not be here, let her know well ahead of time, so we can go through that. And Bob, you don't have anything to report, other than Doug is not here?
Doug is not here. I will report that we have a new community planning manager and design studio manager starting on Monday, Lee Jones. He's a former employee of the planning department back in the mid-2000s, and he's returning, so he will be the new manager of the community plans and design studio.
Perfect. Anything up on the hill, council? On the hill?
Nothing, nothing's at a point where I could say anything new.
Okay. We finish our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn? Adjourn.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.